Everyone, it is eight thirty on Tuesday, April twenty fifth. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. As for roll call, I believe all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Anderson, Burning, Austinis, and also Supervisor Fiedler, who's on a wonderful vacation, lucky him. Any changes or edits to the minutes of the prior committee of the whole meeting? Any changes? If not, those minutes will stand as published. Public comment. I know we have a lot of people here, but I don't know if we have anybody from the public. Any public comment today? Any public comment? All right, we're going to move on to our business items. So I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Witt to get things rolling here.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming in today to kick this process off. So today, we go from the very first agenda for today to our two hundred and ninety-four-page budget book that we're going to produce. So we're not going to do it all today. But we are going to do probably one of the most important things, and that's to talk to the department heads, find out what they're envisioning for 2025, new things that they're seeing that are going to cost additional money. And then we'll take consideration of that and establish some budget priorities. So you're going to gather a lot of information today. You'll give me a little bit of feedback. I will then draft a budget priority resolution, take it to the admin committee in May, it'll be on the county board in June for your adoption. With that adoption, then, that's the instructions I give to the department heads on how they should be drafting their budget, where the priorities of the county are. So that's why today is important. And we're going to kick it off with the department heads, and we're just going to go in the order that they show up on the table of contents of the budget, because that's the easiest way for me to remember it. And so first up is going to be Circuit Court. Who's speaking on behalf of the court?
I guess I will.
All right. You're next anyways, Kristi.
I probably have next to my. All right, good morning, everybody. My report is going to be very short, probably no new budget items that I'm aware of. However, there are some bigger-ticket items within the budget, including interpreters and psyche valves and mediation fees that will probably have an increasing cost for 2025. Any questions?
Do you know what type of dollar amount you're thinking about, Kristi? I mean, are we talking ten thousand, a hundred thousand?
I'm thinking about probably twenty-five for the psyche valves and mediation, and probably ten for interpreter services.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm keeping track of a list of all these things, so if you miss something, we can compare notes at the end. All right, so next up would be the medical examiner.
So with the medical examiner's department, 2025 is going to be the year of transition. I'll be retiring, so we're going to have to think about going into full-time staff. I'm going to be asking for a full-time chief and then combining the program coordinator and investigator position. So that'll be the big change.
Thank you, Patty. HR and I are aware of that, and we're working on some plans to develop that. So we're not sure right now what that cost will be, but there will be some costs involved in that transition. All right, next up is Justice Support Services.
Good morning. As we continue to reimagine drug testing and justice support, that will be our biggest need for 2025. So currently, we do have a full-time drug tester, substance screener is the name of the position. It is ARPA-funded through the end of this year, through December thirty-first of twenty-four. The position was originally created as a .625 employee, so twenty-five hours a week. So what we would request in justice support is to make up the difference there in that funding, to bring her on full-time. So going from twenty-five to forty hours, that would be roughly an additional sixteen thousand dollars plus benefits. So my guess would be the ask is roughly forty thousand dollars. Does that benefit calculation sound right?
Yeah, it's close enough.
Okay. And kind of just a very brief background on that. So historically, we've offered drug testing here at the government center. About six weeks ago, we expanded services to New Richmond, so we have two locations now that we're offering drug testing. And in order to continue to staff both locations, we would need that person to be full-time to split her time at both locations. Any questions?
Thank you, Phil. Next up is the District Attorney. Morning, Carl.
Morning, everyone. So a couple smaller things. We have software for the legal assistance, for PDFs, so they can do more than just view them. We've been talking about for a while getting that for attorneys, diversion, and victim witness. The big, with Office three sixty-five, you can view PDFs, but you can't really do much more than that. You need other software to be able to convert it to a Word document, to do redactions, to make PDF searchable. So we're looking to get thirteen licenses so the rest of the office can have that software. That's about twenty-three hundred dollars. We're hoping to get an owl camera with microphone for our conference room, about a thousand dollars. There's, we've always had budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars for a UW Law student intern. The law school pays them a certain amount, twenty-five hundred, and then we match it, and that's part of their prosecution project program. And they just upped it this year to thirty-six hundred, so an extra eleven hundred dollars for cost of living, because these are people who maintain apartments in Madison, and then they have to travel around the state for internships. The bigger-ticket items are part-time investigator that was approved by the referendum. There's a startup equipment cost. I think it's about seventeen thousand dollars.
I actually have that in there. That was part of some of the anticipated cost for that.
Sure. And then the other position that we eliminated out of the new referendum, trying to get down to the core minimum, or base minimum, was the full-time diversion program case manager. We're still hoping to get that. I know that's probably not in the cards for 2025, but it's still a need we have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next up is child support.
I don't expect any substantial changes in my budget, minus all of the normal increases like service fees and interpreter costs that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, the last one for our public protection section is the sheriff.
Good morning. Well, last year, you guys really, really helped us out, a lot of positions. And so we really appreciate everything this board has done to support us and our mission. For 2025, just a few items. Subscriptions continue. We have all these subscriptions, forensics, CAD systems. Those are all, once we combine all the four divisions with Sheriff's Office and dispatch being some of the larger ones, in this year's budget, we had seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars in subscriptions. That was the amount we had from a nine percent increase from 2023 to this year. So we anticipate that nine percent, again, with that, doesn't include it. But one of the things we want to try to, we're going to need to look forward to is a system called Graykey. It's for downloading and analyzing forensic data. Woodbury, we had been using. We've been running phones over there during some of our investigations, phones, computers, child cases, stuff like that. They can no longer sustain it with all the agencies they've got. So if we were to look at getting that product, it would be about fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty, just for that one, Sheriff?
Just for that Graykey software solution. And the other equipment-wise, we are looking at, we need to replace end-of-year or end-of-life, we're at the five-year stage for tasers, twenty-six tasers at about fifteen hundred dollars each, so that's about forty thousand. Those are the, those are the two new items, but then again, the preparation for the large subscription increase that we anticipate getting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we'll move into some of the administrative departments, then. So first up is Corporation Counsel.
Good morning. You will have a lot of budget priorities, so I don't know if this will be one of them, but I am requesting a legal assistant to be added to the office. Currently, our office has four attorneys, and then one paralegal and one legal assistant. So two support staff support four attorneys. Since taking over the CHIPS cases, the paralegal has basically, that is her job duty now, so it's taken away from a lot of her other job duties. And I know when CHIPS cases were in the DA's office, they had one legal assistant assigned to basically work on CHIPS cases. And in comparison, the DA's office has one legal assistant per attorney, and we only have half a, half a support staff per attorney. I don't know if this is the amount, the correct amount, but I think it would be about eighty-five thousand dollars a year if we budgeted at the top rate of pay with family benefits. And that's the only request I have.
All right, thank you, Heather. Next up is Administration. I'll have some additional comments at the end about the bigger-picture items, health insurance and wages and stuff like that. As far as the County Administrator's Office itself, there'll be no additional request. Next up, then, is the County Clerk.
Good morning. I anticipate no changes, status quo for all four budgets that I handle, the dog fund, county clerk, county board, and elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a feeling we're going to be on a tight budget, but I am going to ask for one FTE for someone focused specifically on training and development. Since I've been in this role, it's just become more apparent that this is an area that my current team just can't fully support. I know that our supervisors would love a supervisor training program. Right now, they're just kind of thrown to the wolves a little bit, learning trial by error. And we started looking into training and development over almost a year and a half ago, looking at departments and seeing what policies are out there, what handbooks are out there, what are they doing for training? And it became such a huge job that we didn't realize that it was going to be, take up this much capacity. We've gotten through one department, almost. So it's, there's just a huge need. We have four different learning management systems that are currently being used across the county. Some of those programs, we don't even have access to as a H R department, so as far as records retention, knowing what's happening in departments for training, I think that we could definitely use a full-time position to focus not only on just department training, building a supervisor training program, doing all the quarterly leadership training initiatives. There's just a lot to be done in that field. And when we look at exit reviews, we do see that come up a lot, that people don't feel like they're really part of a team, that they haven't been trained. And so I think as far as the return on investment of retaining and recruiting people, I think it would, it would be well worth the spend on it. Probably looking at this hundred and twenty thousand is, with benefits for that position. So it does come with some costs, but I think it would definitely have a good return as well. All right.
All right, next up, then, is IT.
Good morning, everybody. Typically, we don't ask for a whole lot. We always have software increases annually. Our vendors charge us between eight and twelve percent is usually their uplift annually for software, which amounts to about eighty to ninety thousand dollars this year, because we maintain about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of subscriptions, the two biggest ones being Oracle and Microsoft, which amount to about six hundred thousand alone, so.
All right, thank you, John. You can see how some of these inflationary pressures that we see are much greater than the revenue sources coming in for the county. Finance is next.
Good morning. No changes for finance expected for next year.
Dustin's the hero. County Treasurer. Let's see, you beat that, Denise.
Good morning. I will have one notable increase next year with our software package, so we have to move to the new version of our tax collection software. In 2025, there's a one-time implementation fee of twenty-eight thousand five hundred, and then the subscription cost is going to go up by about fifteen thousand annually. That is a software product that we share with the property listing side on community development, so it'll be allocated, both those costs will be allocated between our two departments. I just don't have the breakdown of those yet. Otherwise, it should be pretty stable.
All right, thank you, Denise. And then the last one for the Administration section is Facilities.
Good morning. I have no additional request for 2025.
You get a slow clap out of Supervisor Burning. All right, Robbie, Highway Department.
I wish I had a long piece of paper. Oh, thank you for your continued support of the Highway Department. We will have no requests for additional staff members nor operational in 2025.
Come and give me a hug.
Would it be awkward, or?
Wait, wait, I have one question. What type of savings, hopefully, did we experience in the fact that we had such a mild winter?
So we have, you put me right on the spot. So what we're doing is we're applying the savings, and we talked about it at the last committee meeting. So we will be repaving a portion of County Highway A from County Highway E, East, to the Willow River Bridge. We'll be repaving that section, so we had about a three to four hundred thousand dollar savings with winter, and we're applying it to pavement this summer, so. And I hope it doesn't snow. No offense to anyone that makes their living with winter. I loved last winter, and we can have another one just like.
All right, well, we are trucking right along. Next up, then, is our Health and Human Services section. That's Bob. Be gentle, Bob.
I'm not likely to get any hugs or applause. I had just a brief, I promise, a brief presentation. Can I bring it up on there? Escape if I can. Well, I'll let you do it, Adam. It won't be so awkward.
Which one did you put it in?
Twenty-four. And then April. Thank you. Hey. How do I make it big? All right, I got past that. So our service demands and budget pressures tend to migrate and move from area to area, depending on the year and depending on what's going on in the county, in the country, in the state. What I tried to do was list the six areas where we anticipate the most concern. The first one is emergency detention placements. As you can see, they went up by about sixty-seven percent since 2021 through 2023 at a cost of just over a million dollars. These are placements primarily of people that go to Winnebago State Hospital to get help. The problem is not going to go away in the short term, but one thing that exacerbates this going forward is the closure of the hospitals in the O'Clare area and the closure of Ellie Phillips, which was a twenty-four-bed, I think, det- and the closure of Ellie Phillips, which was a twenty-four bed, I think, detoxification center that closed in, in that area. So that, the anticipation is that these referrals will increase going forward just due to a lack of resources more local to us. What we do to, well, I'll get into that, but the, the long-term outlook for this is a little better. The state legislature passed legislation that would require DHS to apply for a waiver that would allow Medicaid spending in places like Winnebago. And that's a ways off, maybe two, three years. But when, when and if that happens, that would reduce these costs that you see up there of a million dollars significantly. So we hope they're successful in that effort. Then the Aging and Disabilities Resource Center has seen a forty-one percent increase in referrals and demands in general over the last, well, from twenty-two to twenty-three. As you know, we have an aging population, and those demands are likely just to trend up going forward. And our A D R Cs have been flat funded since 2008. This one has been. It was five million dollars allocated to A D R Cs through the legislature last year, but none of that money came to us. In fact, we were faced with a decrease in funding until we bought back a little bit. So the, you know, the, the, some of the other drivers, like I said, are aging population, ARPA funding expiring that was helping to offset some of the tax money that we, we needed, rising food costs, rising costs in general. And then Adult Protective Services continues to see increases, a forty-five percent increase over the last year, four years of people being referred for Adult Protection Services. And financial exploitation's gone up about four hundred and eighty-seven percent since 2021. Those trends are likely to continue. Youth Justice is an area that we took a staff person from in, in the past and moved them to CPS where the demands were even greater. And now we're, we sort of rob Peter to pay Paul there. So the Youth Justice, long-term, ongoing case managers are stressed right now with the increase in referrals there of about forty-two percent. So as I said, our staffing pattern decreased a little bit. Most of those referrals come from parents, law enforcement, and schools. And then mental health resources again are strained and exacerbated by the H S H S closure in Eau Claire. Birth to Three Occupational Therapy was also affected by the closure of the hospitals in Eau Claire. We currently contract with three different agencies for occupational therapy, and we're considering whether or not to hire an occupational therapist to save the costs of contracting. I'm working with Michelle on whether or not that makes sense to do financially or not. And finally, the workforce challenges at the healthcare campus continue. We appreciate the, the additional salary raises and, and, and the efforts so far to try and bolster recruitment and retention there. But that workforce for the long-term care facilities is just one that's in demand, extreme demand right now. So you have to be very competitive to try and get these workers to come. It's one of the things that prevents us from opening kitty roads for dementia care, the memory care unit, because we simply can't find the staff to work there. The building's there, everything's ready to go, except we don't have workers. That's anticipated. That workforce issue is anticipated to continue going forward. So what do we do about these things? Because there, every year, there's these kinds of pressures. We try and, we try and apply for any grant monies, any state, federal dollars that we can that support our mission and, and support the, the areas that are in most need in our department. And we focus on early intervention to be proactive rather than reactive to problems. The co-responders, peer recovery specialists, positions like that, case managers are, and, and a lot of positions in Children's Services are designed to be early intervention and prevent those deep-end costs and those poor outcomes. There's a continued focus in our department on the, on the partnership between public health and public safety. So working with the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement with the court system, with justice support services to try and bridge those, that population that shares both the public safety world and the public health world. And we bill all Medicaid, of course, insurance and client fees when we can collect them. As I said, there's legislation that was passed to help with the eleven fifteen waiver, the federal waiver to allow Medicaid spending in places like Winnebago. Medicaid expansion would be helpful. And grant, grant dollars like for opioids specifically have been plentiful through our State Opioid Response Grant and through settlement dollars, and we're trying to utilize those, those dollars in harm reduction efforts for products and for a position that you, you gave us last year to work in Children's Services, working with families in CPS who have substance use issues. And that position has just been hired, we've just hired someone for that position. What we're asking for this year, it really is to support our A D R C. We have one supervisor right now in that division who's at a point eight-eight FTE. Asking if we can increase that FTE to one. It's Amy Romehelt. She does a very nice job and is overwhelmed with the amount of work that goes on. It'd be an annual cost increase of about ten thousand dollars to levy. We're also asking for a new H H S supervisor position for the A D R C, although, to help with that workload. Although the cost of that can be offset by state and federal dollars, about half of that cost would be in state and federal funding. We're also anticipating a savings of about forty thousand dollars in our A D R C newsletter by going with a different publisher. Kristin Newton was very clever about finding a publisher that wouldn't charge us anything to publish the newsletter. They get their money through ads and advertising and can distribute it digitally and in paper form. So with that savings from the newsletter of about forty thousand dollars and reduced postage, excuse me, reduced postage and the state and federal dollars we anticipate, this new position might cost us about ten thousand dollars in tax levy, for a total of twenty thousand for both of those changes. I don't think I'm being overly optimistic with that. I think that's a pretty, pretty good number. We're also asking to extend the peer recovery, or the certified peer specialist positions that have been funded under ARPA for one more year. We have money, we have money in that program to do that. It took us a while to hire people and to train them, so there were vacancies at the onset of this. And that'll, so that left a balance in that program code. So what we'd like to do is continue those positions into 2025. Supervisor, I'm sorry. Administrator Witt has laid out a plan for how to use that money without exceeding a certain dollar amount so that we could continue these positions who are extremely effective, I think, in preventing people from deep-end crisis costs, going to places like Winnebago, just assisting people in the community who otherwise wouldn't even engage with healthcare. Probably prevents people from being engaged with law enforcement as well, going to jail, just by working with them at that peer level. So hoping to extend those positions, there's two right now. We contract with Northwest Passage for those subcontract, but it's ARPA funded, and there would be no tax levy required for those. So the summary is basically that we're asking for one point one-two FTEs in the A D R C. Most of that cost would be offset by federal and state dollars and savings from the newsletter. It's due to increasing demand and an aging population that's going to continue aging. Most of our services are mandated, so we try to cut, we try to mitigate our costs. We have to pay them, right? So we, we're trying to mitigate our costs through early intervention, using what money we have to be effective in preventing those deep-end costs and high-cost environments. And then we're trying to address the workforce issues at the healthcare campus. Human Resources, the Administrator have been very helpful in trying to strategize around what, what can we do to recruit people and open kitty roads for what it was intended for. And then finally, the Youth Justice and Birth to Three referrals, they just continue to increase. That's statewide. It's not just us. And it's really stressing those areas. If, if there was money to fall out of the sky, we would ask for a position there for ongoing case management and youth justice. And that's, that's all tax levy, so that'd be about a hundred thousand dollars.
Are you saying just one position there is what would be needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what we think, yeah. The, the occupational therapy position is, is not decided yet whether that would make sense to hire for or to continue contracting for. I think that's all I had, but of course I had, take questions. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought.
So total then, did I read right, a hundred and twenty thousand for our purposes, for the whole areas?
If we, if we were able to get the Youth Justice position, it would be a hundred and twenty thousand. Without it, twenty thousand.
Thank you. And then I see there was some good strategies going on with regard to using ARPA funds and whatnot. Does any of that plan commit us into the future if those were to go away?
No. No, we have a, we have a subcontract with Northwest Passage, and I'm, I'm guessing the contract has a, has a termination clause that gives us a thirty-day out.
Supervisor Rotino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question regarding, if I'm correct, since Kitty Roads was put together, that's never been occupied. Am I correct?
Not since I've been here, Supervisor.
So it was.
What's the possibility of a contract service for that? Like Presbyterian Homes has, you know, the availability in, you know, in the network area. So we could actually utilize that and serve the public. It's just, it's sad that it sits there.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure you share that. Is there a possibility that we can, you know, all they have to do is bring staffing in. It's pretty easy that way, it looks like to me.
Yeah, and that's, it's a good point, and it is something we've considered. Could we, could we contract out for dementia care in that unit? It, it's something we'll explore. I think our hope was to hire staff so that we had some control over how care was provided and, and more oversight there. But it, it may come to a situation where I'd have to talk with Administrator Witt and see what the options might be around a, a contract, similar maybe to what we would have done with the emergency, I'm sorry, the crisis stabilization urgent care idea. We'll just contract with somebody to come in and operate that. No, it's, it's on the table. Yes, sir.
And if I could just clarify with Kitty Roads, Bob was hired during the pandemic. First time we saw him was his first day in person. He was much taller than I thought he was going to be. But Kitty Roads was actually open prior to the pandemic. We closed it down during the pandemic. So at the very end of 2017, we opened Kitty Roads, and there were people in that unit all the way up through probably the very early part of 2020. So it was occupied for about three years.
Just quickly, the staffing situation would be, we're currently about eleven FTE short now for C N A positions at the healthcare campus. So we, we use contracted staff to help out, to open Kitty Roads. To staff it ourselves, we'd require about another, about eleven or twelve FTE C N A positions. So in addition to the ones that are currently vacant. It might, it might be an option.
Any other questions? There was a lot of information there. Good. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Last one for the Health and Human Services section is Veteran Services. Phil, come on down.
So Veteran Services is not anticipating any changes to my budget. I will say though that as far as, one of the things that we do through the Veteran Service Department is, is van service to and from Minneapolis. And right now, I'm in the KIP. I'm forecasting that we're going to need a new van in 2026. That's just an estimate. And, you know, so if something comes up in 2025 where the VA says we need a new van for that to continue to roll, I would have to work on trying to get in the 2025 KIP. So if that happens, hand on heart, I'll fall on the sword. But that's not my decision. It would be from, coming from the VA. But that's the only thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Phil. All right. We get into the Community Development Departments then. The first one up is the Register of Deeds.
Good morning. So as always, the Register of Deeds really doesn't have a ton to share. And just so we know that we're kind of checking all our bases, I've had extensive talks with John and his department in I T just to make sure that our data is secure, we're backing it up, that, you know, we don't have to worry or move it off-site to like our vendor fiddler. That would be fifteen thousand a year, so we don't anticipate needing that either. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right. Next up, we have the Community Development Conglomerate, Jason.
Good morning. So for the most part, Community Development will be the same. As you have heard, we have a lot of inflation pressures with our software and just our general amount of service that we provide. If we were going to request one thing, it would be more with partnering with Heather and Adam to combine some software and make it easier to be found on the website. So we would get rid of three software programs, and we would go to Civic Plus for our ordinances and for our parks and for our payment processing. And that would be probably about forty thousand to make that switch. So, but that would be county-wide too. So it'd be all the counties' ordinances would all be transitioned onto the website, and it would be easier to be found by the public. And then we would get rid of two maintenance contracts in the process.
You said four or forty?
Forty thousand.
All right. All right, fine. I'll throw an extra zero on there.
But I'm assuming there would be savings down the road, even though you're spending that forty thousand?
Correct. So that's to take and transition from N Code, which is our current ordinance software, to the Civic Plus version, which would be MuniCode. And then that would also be to transition our payment from Square into their online web portal, and it would be transitioning our current Connect software for the park side over to the same vendor, basically. So, yep.
Would that be, is that the implementation cost or an increase in the annual cost or a combination?
That's the implementation cost, but it is a guess. The park side alone is just about nine thousand dollars. And so I'm guessing to take and put all of our county ordinances into the program, that we're going to be between twenty and thirty thousand. Right now, on the county site, we've got all of our county ordinances in a PDF version, and then we've also got N Code out there. So we've got two different formats. This would streamline it down into one format, and it would be almost like a Google search engine for any of the ordinances. So let's say you wanted to take and find out about Culver, and you type in Culver, it would search anything with highway and with anything with like our land division ordinance to take and bring all the county policies regarding culverts up to the top. Yeah. Supervisor.
Supervisor Amber.
Thank you. So we'd have to research a little bit on what savings we'd have on the other annual fees from the other softwares we would be migrating from. Is that right? We still need to get those types of, that data yet?
Correct. I'm going to guess that our annual fees would be very similar in that, but instead of having three vendors, we'd be down to the one vendor, and then everything would be connected and would flow better for the public, for our data to be online on our website.
So it could be a wash.
I would say in the future, it will be a wash. It will not be an ongoing increased expense.
With the initial cost for us in 2025, around that forty plus thirty thousand, so about seventy?
No, about forty thousand total.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so that would transition all of the county ordinances over to the website, MuniCode, and that would transfer all of our park purchasing, campsites, everything over there, and then all of our payment processing over.
So for 2025, we'd probably be paying for two, two software-type services until we get it merged?
Correct. To implement.
Implement it.
Supervisor Shirley?
So the 40,000 is just for the one-time transfer into the implementation, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jason. All right. So what's left is some of the other organizations that we cooperate with. So like UW Extension, we pay them about a quarter of a million dollars a year for contract positions. It's actually something we're going to be taking a look at, reviewing those in more detail over the next couple of months. We have library tax levy. That's really a mathematical calculation based upon usage. The county has typically funded those at 100%. Economic development, again, we have a contractor, an agreement, I suppose of sorts with them for support. And then the Fair Board. So I'm not anticipating any significant changes to any of those. So that is it for all of the departments. So I guess when I look at it, I was tallying up as we went here, so I saw about 550,000 in position requests and just under $400,000 in either inflationary pressures or tools that the departments need to do their job. So looking at these in total, do you have any questions before I get into the other bigger picture parts?
So when we were talking just now about the consolidation of software, is there a way to do that with some of the other departments too? I know some things are specialized and maybe not, that won't work, but we have all these licenses and you probably looked at all of that, but is there a way to be more efficient with some of that?
Yeah, you know, the county really in the last decade has done that. I mean, the ERP that we implemented replaced like four different software packages, but the one package is probably more expensive than what those four were. So while we do gain some efficiencies, really at the end of the day, we don't gain a lot in monetary savings, even with the consolidation. Yeah, no, they're all made of lead. All right. Supervisor Burning has his hugs and I have my charts. So both just as effective, probably. All right. So budget process, we're going to go over a big picture now of where we're at. So April 25th, we're at the start of this. We're going to work our way through. And I mentioned earlier, we're trying to establish priorities. So you've heard what some of these requests are. So this is the same slide that I had at the orientation, but this is the big picture for the 2025 budget. Tax levy rate, I think it'll continue to decrease even with the referendum on there. Our debt service is stable. I think we'll see a decrease in levy rate. So that's the good news. Our net new construction number, it should be right around 750,000. I mean, I could be off by a couple hundred thousand either way, but not much more than that. Sales tax growth, I'm anticipating about 400,000. This is probably an area that you can have a lot of discussion on because there is more flexibility there, but we have a plan in place of why we under budget on sales tax so that we're able to transfer money to the KIP or to debt service for other purposes. But that is an area that you guys by all means should discuss and set some policy on. Health insurance premiums. Okay, so this is the big one. I'm anticipating a 5% to 10% increase on that. Now, I have some control over where we fall within that range, but we're going to be within that range. What we can change is we can change the structure, the contribution percentage, we can alter the plan to shift it one way or the other. But we do anticipate it'll be somewhere between the 5 and 10 and then 5% is 500,000. So if you looked at our revenue, the two lines above that, we're just over a million dollars, 1.2 million maybe. So 500,000 for health insurance is probably the bottom that we're going to have. If we do a step increase for the employees, that averages about 2% of our wages, that's The union contract is up. Every 1% of the union contract is 80,000. So a 3% increase in the union contract, that'd be 240,000, quarter of a million dollars. I will have a closed session at the next county board meeting for you guys to talk and give me some guidelines for where you want me to settle the union contract. So you don't say it now in front of the cameras and have the union hear that. We'll talk about that more in closed session. You'll establish what target you want me to be at. So I'm not anticipating additional positions. We did hear about a half a million dollars worth of requests that will come in, but based upon those expenses that we just went over, I don't know that we'll have a lot of room for that. Debt service is flat. And then do anticipate that there'll be a debt ask in 2025 for capital projects. All right. Now a little bit more on health insurance. So those orange lines, that's the trend of the expenses. So a fund balance is our fund balance chart. The fund balance is to be 25% of the expenses within the health insurance fund. So that orange line is where the trend is. You can see over the last decade that that's really kind of spiking up now on us. It's rising. And the blue bars, then those columns, those are the balance that's in that fund balance. So it was very healthy, you know, back in 2014 and it's really steadily come down. And where we don't want to see it is below the orange lines. And so we've, two of the last three years now, we've dipped below those orange lines. That puts the county at risk that we're going to spend more money than we have sitting in the bank because that's our savings account. So that's what we want to caution on. And that's why though, we're going to see that 5% to 10% increase in health insurance premiums is because I don't have a big cash cushion to sit on and, you know, ride it out. When the cash balance drops, you have to adjust the rates up to keep up with it. So that's health insurance. I had a presentation last week, Family Friendly Workplaces out of Woodville had shared these slides with me. And this is really interesting. When we talk about step increases in wages and the union contract, this is net new entrance to the workforce from 2010 projected out to 2040. So somebody graduates high school, somebody graduates college, they enter the workforce, right? Somebody retires, they're leaving the workforce. So net new entrance, and this is the state of Wisconsin. So 2025 is projected 592 net new employees in the entire state of Wisconsin. And so that really bottoms up by 2030, it's 129 new employees in the entire state of Wisconsin. So when your business is expanding, you're trying to hire somebody, just know, everyone's got a job. There's a job for everybody out there that wants a job. You can see back in 2010, there were 34,000 people entering the workforce that year. So the economy's going good, new jobs are being created, we have people to fill those jobs, that's great. But we're hitting the bottom of that trough right now over the next five years. So it's going to become more and more critical to remain competitive with the wages. And you ask, well, out of those 129 people in 2030, how many of those are going to be in St. Croix County? Well, that's the next slide. So in 2030, we'll actually add about 155 people. So we'll add more people than the state of Wisconsin. Yeah, we're going to take them all. And we do, so we are above the average, but what that means is there's other counties out there that are negative. So Polk County that's on this chart, they are negative right now. They are losing more workers every year than they're gaining. So I don't know how you fill any jobs within that county. So again, I just wanted to stress what the impact is for workers because we hire a lot of employees. If you look over the last 10 years, we've added 100 employees. As the county grows, more service demand, we've added 100 employees. You know, there aren't 100 employees to add in the future. So just something to be cognizant of when we talk about where our priorities are. But retaining our workforce is one of the priorities. And again, I'll just quickly go through these. Mill rate, we've been doing a great job with that. That's dropping, it's going to continue to drop and that will continue to drop. We're the eighth lowest out of the 72 counties, so we're doing a good job with the mill rate. Per capita, if you look at it, we're 19th lowest out of the 72. And then these are the tax bills. It's not all the county, we only average about 20% of the tax bills. Our revenues are, again, remember, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about priorities. The priorities usually come out of the property tax. The property tax is only 36%. It's the blue bar. It's the only 36% of our total budget. So a third of our budget is what we're going to spend all the time talking about. That's where the revenue is coming in mostly. Or the sales tax is 10%, so maybe 46%. The expense side, again, Bob took the longest time up here. I think I had him timed at six minutes, but he's 29% of the budget. So he's a third of the whole budget, so I suppose we can give him the couple extra minutes. But again, where you heard the request, you can see that, you know, some of the people that had the longer requests and longer parts are the bigger sections of the pie chart. Expenses by categories, salaries and benefits, again, is half of it. And that 100 increase in employees, so 2016, we're at 560, we're at 658. There were eight new positions authorized with the referendum, so we're going to hit 100 employees within a decade. So that's about an 18% increase over that time period. Yeah. Population growth, equalized value continues to grow up and that's it. So the question I have for you then is, where do you see the priorities? Hearing all that, I guess now you can start the discussion. What do you see as the priorities? What questions do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I brought this along with me today for a reason. It's the 2024 county budget. And the purpose of that was, is I would support any increases necessary in public protection and in human resources, health, health and human services. With the exception here of our changing the, and I wrote this so I don't let my emotions get in the road, to estimate the annual sales and property tax that we monthly total to within 5% of actual, to eliminate the automatic raise that the budget gets every single year. It gets millions of dollars and then wind up, we wind up spending it on projects. Well, if we wouldn't have had that excess, which I think is an excess, we could have funded everything we needed in the public protection. We could have probably funded more than what we did by going to the taxpayers and increasing the levy. I hope never to do that again. That's, that's my opinion. That's how I'd like to see us go forward, is to reduce that extra at the end. And I would, I didn't see anything in the presentations that was, you know, glaring or anything. I would support everybody's right now, staying at the 2024 level, plus anything that they've asked for. I'd give it to them. But we got to start holding the budget down because the federal government is going to run out of money eventually here at $35 trillion debt. They gave us all the money, they gave it to the states and they give it to the county and that's going to run out. We got to be better stewards of the taxpayer dollars for the St. Croix County. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, and let me just explain the sales tax. And I fully support the decision that the county board makes on where you want sales tax to be budgeted. That is purely a policy decision that the county board sets. What the county boards in the past have done is we know that we're budgeting probably about a million dollars below our estimate on sales tax, which is about 10%. And so we do that for two reasons. One is it gives us some sort of recession proofing. So if recession happens, sales tax would drop. It doesn't typically drop, but it could drop in a recession. And so if sales tax numbers drop in the year when we projected them to be full collected, we could run into a negative budget. So a recession proves us that way. And secondly, we know then that we're going to have that million dollars extra and we've been rolling that million dollars either into our capital improvement fund, which allows us to continue to maintain some of the infrastructure in the county without borrowing. So whenever we can avoid borrowing, we avoid bond issuance costs and we avoid interest expenses. So it's more cost-effective for the taxpayers in the long run. Or two, we've put some of the money into the debt service fund to reduce debt service costs that particular year, again, as a tax benefit for the taxpayers. So we have a use for that million dollars. We don't continue to accumulate it. But again, that is purely a policy decision that this county board needs to set. And I will do whatever you guys want. I just want you to understand what your choices are.
I have a question for you. Is there any way to estimate what the impact would have been on debt service had we not had that policy in place? Maybe you don't have, can't answer right off the top of your head, but it might be worthwhile to go back and look at it for the past, I don't know, five, 10 years. Had we not had that policy, what would be the impact on the KIP and either what projects wouldn't have been done or additional debt bar, or additional borrowing that would have been required? That might give us a little better idea of the effectiveness of that policy and if we want to consider changing it.
Yeah. What I can say is that we spend about $3 million a year on KIP projects without borrowing any money. So basically that would be, you know, we'd be doing a $3 million per year bond issue or debt issuance in order to maintain that same level of maintenance. So yeah, I'd have to calculate what that comes out to in the budget. $3 million would be a little under 10%. It'd be probably 7, 8% of the tax levy.
Supervisor Burning?
There's a caveat to that though, that some of those projects we've debated, pushed off, not done, or just done because we had the money there. Previous boards made those decisions. So I would say as supervisors, we should look at that data, knowing that policymakers prior to us made those decisions and not necessarily those were foregone conclusions that those needed to be spent. So that, I think that's a big difference between having spillover money from the operating levy the year before compared to issuing debt service. That's a far greater ask of us as policymakers that put our feet to the fire in cases like, should we put a $50,000 sprinkler system into a bill, you know, or a lawn irrigation system into the front of the building? If we're to borrow for that compared to having cash on hand, that becomes a far greater burden on us to have to justify borrowing that money to our neighbors than, than just spending the cash that's there to improve a building. So take that all into consideration when we're looking at these numbers, when that data's pulled. It's good data, but I think that's something we need to take into account when we're deciding, is this a good policy for us to keep moving forward or not?
Supervisor Shirley?
I'd like to ask about fund balance. So I know in the past, we've talked about in order to keep our rating, we need to have 30 some odd percent, I can't remember the exact number, in our, but what on a percentage basis are we at currently?
Yeah, so the fund balance target is 35% plus or minus 3%. So anywhere from 32 to 38 is where we want to be. So the auditors will finish up in the middle of the summer, they'll give me the audit report, they'll give me the exact number. But I mean, I'm anticipating we'll probably have about $2 million excess above our target at the end of the year. Again, so in August usually is when I come back to you with that. I'll come back and I'll say, all right, we're $2 million over our target, where would you like to move that money to? Because we don't need to keep it in the general fund. And the county boards in the past have always been very good about not just keeping money and accumulating it, they repurpose it and use it for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Supervisor Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're looking at a period where we're almost no available employees. So we'll be going out and poaching people if we're looking for quality replacements for supervisors and department heads and such. That being the case, I'm looking at the Human Resource Requirement, one FTE for development and training, is really valid. I'm also concerned about the gap in healthcare. And I'm wondering... That being the case, I'm looking at the human resource requirement, one FTE for development and training. It's really valid. Um, I'm also concerned about the gap in healthcare. And I'm wondering what it would take to put some money, uh, not asking the, the staff to pay for that gap and wondering what it would take to take some money from someplace else, maybe the reserve fund and pay some of that gap up so that the employees don't have a greater burden to fill that gap. Isn't, it's because largely inflation pressures that would be causing that gap. And perhaps we can make this, um, more, uh, an environment where people are less likely to move on to another job where they have better health benefits and, uh, a better opportunity for promotion.
Yeah, I think, uh, to address the, so the health insurance fund, when I showed you that slide, you know, I showed you those blue bars that were below the orange lines, which means that, uh, you know, we're below our target on that. I mean, so that is an option that the county board would have. They could take some of the fund balance that Supervisor Shirley was just asking about, move it to the health insurance fund. That stabilizes that fund and, um, reduces the need for me to increase the health insurance fund by as much because I don't have to rebuild the fund balance with premium increase. So I could go on the lower end then of the premium increase, knowing that I had a stable savings account to draw from if we have another bad year and go over. So that would be a policy decision the county board would have to set.
Just a quick follow-up. My purpose for, for suggesting that is that we're, we're going into a time where we should probably, and tell me if you, if, if you think I'm wrong, but we should be looking at retention as one of our priorities because of the workforce environment.
Correct, yep. Or just denying retirements. So whoever in the audience thought they were gonna retire in the next five years, canceled.
Supervisor Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one of the things I keep thinking about is, you know, I know, I know a budget is a mathematical calculation of our suspicions. And if our projections and our suspicions are turned upside down and we're looking at these cons, more conservative, uh, uh, estimates that we put together in the package, and we've been fortunate and heaven forbid if they tip upside down, what is our, our, our plan to overcome that? Do we have a side plan to have emergency bonding or things like that? I was just wondering how tight we get on our projections to get, to, to remain comfortable.
Yeah, I, and I said, it's, it's a policy decision. So you can, um, go higher on the sales tax, cover a lot of these things. Uh, that's definitely a possibility. And Supervisor Burning was absolutely right. The three million we were spending, I make it easy for you to approve these projects. That's on purpose. That's not a, that's not an accident. Um, so I'm making it easy so that we can maintain the county. The staff very much likes the fact that we're able to maintain the facilities and the infrastructure that we have in the county. Um, I think they take great pride in, you know, where we are compared to our peers, uh, that we're providing those resources. Um, so if you reduce, uh, the sales tax, cover a lot of these things, you're gonna solve one year's budget. Um, but what's gonna happen then is future budget years and two, three years out, um, we're gonna be seeing a smaller and smaller amount of, uh, fund balance available. So I told Supervisor Shirley, I think we're gonna have about two million left over from twenty twenty-three. So you're gonna see that amount get smaller and smaller a few years from now then, and you're gonna have less ability to approve those projects. So you're gonna scrutinize them more, uh, because it'll cost more to do a bond issue to do them. So there'll be less of those projects done. So that's the cycle, though, that you're going to see, is you're gonna see, you know, uh, less availability of cash resources, less money put into the projects. Some of, uh, the things, uh, get put off. So if anyone remembers the parking lot here at the government center, I know Pat Thompson was just embarrassed by it that it was in such horrible shape. He tried and tried for years to get that rebuilt, and we finally did. But that was one of the things that the county board just continued to put off, because it was a half a million dollars to rebuild the parking lot. So if you put off those projects, that's what you're gonna see in the next cycle, which is gonna be, you know, five to ten years out. But that's the cycle that the county will tip into.
Supervisor Hanson. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. The, the parking lot was bonded for once. And then there was another emergency that came up and they used that bond Monday from the parking lot for something else. And I don't recall what it was. And then they had to bond for it again because things were put off so much. This happened in the late nineties and then they bonded for it again and, and redid the parking lot. So that's what happens when you put things off.
Supervisor Amber.
And I guess I'm a little tender yet, uh, prejudiced a little bit too, because years ago, we didn't have a plan like this. And we did have in the old courthouse buckets catching the water dripping because we did not have the funds. I remember that. And, and, uh, some of the, you know, again, talking about eating our seed corn, and we did. You know, we had back then. And this is a plan that I think is a good plan. We can tweak it. And, and there's, I, I, I agree, we can keep tweaking it. Um, but where we've come from and where we are is a big difference. And, and I just wanted to share that, that, uh, the eating our seed corn and, and it's really difficult to fund fixed assets. Uh, you know, and look at your roof, look at, you know, those kinds of things. And again, but that's not saying that when we get to that point on the KIP, that we scrutinize it to the best of our ability. Even, you know, whether we have the funds or not. Thank you.
Supervisor Rice.
I'm new to this. I wanna make sure I'm tracking some of these proposals. I'm going back to some of the discussion on sales tax and, and, um, how we account for that. Um, I get uncomfortable when we try to match a variable income with a fixed expense in my personal budget in, in anything. So, um, do we have the ability to go back and look perhaps twenty years and see what the variability is through that period of budget to sales revenues? So we could capture some recessionary periods and see, um, just how much cushion we have in that. You know, it makes sense to me to be conservative in our budgeting because it's unknown what the revenue's gonna be. But we could track trends and see to, and to entertain the question of how much relative risk might we be taking if we, you know, choose a different budget allocation.
Yeah, I know I can go back at least ten years, uh, and what I can say is the data's not gonna be kind to me uh, because it, the gap has continued to grow over the years. Uh, we've been very, very strong in sales tax, both because the county's a growing county and, and, uh, really online retail sales got captured, you know, four or five years ago now. Uh, but that really bolstered, uh, that sales tax collection in St. Croix County.
So we can acknowledge we had, you know, shock in twenty twenty, but if we can go, go back a little bit further, if we can go back and capture some two thousand eight experience, that might be more telling because it was over a longer period.
Yeah, and I don't know that I'm gonna have the data twenty years old. A decade I know I have. I don't know how much, uh, further back would be available.
Helpful. I'd just like to know, um, on a relative basis, how much risk we might be taking, um, if we were to ratchet down.
I think I can quantify that, um, fairly concisely for you. So right now, we're budgeting, say, ninety percent. I'm not, I don't do it on a percentage basis. I do it more on a dollar. But we're roughly ninety percent of projected sales tax, which puts us a million dollars under. So Supervisor Otino said he wanted to go to ninety-five percent, uh, which is a half a million dollars difference. So we could add a half million dollars of additional revenue to that projection uh, by going to ninety-five percent rather than ninety percent. And that still leaves us about a half a million dollar cushion then. So that's really what all this discussion is about, is, it's just five hundred thousand.
Supervisor Telon.
One of my priorities is, um, emergency detention. That's over a million dollars we spent last year. And I think if we can focus on reducing that somehow, that'd be a huge savings, uh, total for the county or at least for health and human services. Uh, I don't have an answer, but I mean, if we can focus on that.
I'll follow up that. I, I share that, and I've been hearing this story about the cost of emergency detention for almost a decade. Um, this is pie in the sky, but I, I don't understand how we quantify what that need is, how, how we detain someone. And leap of faith here, but I don't know if that Kitty Road Center could be modified in any portion. I mean, I think we'd all agree that we'd, to have something in Northwest Wisconsin would be the ideal, so that we're not transporting people. So it just becomes a question of how do we do that and what are the qualifications around that? And I'm asking because I don't know.
Yeah, there, there's some solutions out there for that. None of them are gonna be covered by the half a million we're talking about right now. They're more like fifteen, twenty-five million, you know, it's, it's gonna take big dollars. And it's not, it's not St. Croix County's problem. It's the whole state's, the whole region of the state's issue. Yeah, I mean, it, we're not gonna solve it in St. Croix County.
Supervisor Burning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we also need to keep in mind that we are looking at uh, this in particular, these dollars are the, what is it, the thirty-some percent that come from property tax and the ten percent that come from sales tax. That's really what we are responsible for. Um, I mean, we're responsible for the whole budget, but what we're looking at from a tax perspective, those are the two areas that we're concerned about, and I think, so now I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to our administrator with this question, that our undesignated fund balance is proportionate to what we collect in those two areas. Is that our percentage that we have in reserves?
You know, it's actually close to that, but that's not where the formula comes from. It actually comes from general fund expenditures.
Okay, so it is for the full one hundred and twenty-ish million?
It's not. It's not. It's general fund. So HHS is not within the general fund. They have their own fund balance, their own fund balance policy. Highway is outside of that. The nursing home is outside of that. So general fund is, uh, general government corp counsel, admin, HR, um, you know, the statutory offices, the courts, uh, the sheriff's department. That's where the general fund is. So each of them have their own fund balances, and it's the general fund one that we're looking at, which does make up, um, you know, probably half of the total budget.
Yeah, so what is our, so I got several questions in a row here, and this is just so that all of us can get a grasp on what we're talking about. The undesignated fund balance, so that's not health insurance, that's not, you know, um, what are some of the other ones that we have? Um, yeah, HHS, the, what is that currently at percentage to what, what we need?
Those fund balances?
The, the undesignated fund.
Oh, well, the undesignated fund balance is that.
The leftover?
It's the thirty-five percent is our target. So the total dollars that in there, it's about seventeen million dollars.
Right, and what is, do we have a statutory minimum that we need to be at?
There is no minimum. You can take it all the way to zero if you want. I just don't recommend.
Okay, Supervisor Amber laughing at me. I'm not considering that. Don't, um, so, so don't, don't take me wrong on this. Um, and, and then our bond rating is, we wanna be at thirty percent or higher for when we do borrow our interest rate. Is it possible for us to, for, for you to show us how that impacts our bond rating as that undesigned, undesigned fund balance go, or that, that, that fund balance goes down? And, and mostly so that i- if we do have our feet pressed to the fire to have to borrow money or bond, that the supervisors understand how that will impact us if we're drawing money out of that. Does that make sense what I asked?
Yeah, you know, the fund balance is one of a lot of factors that a bond rating agency looks at when they rate us for a bond issue. I mean, whether we were at thirty-five percent or thirty percent, at the end of the day, it's probably not gonna make a difference. What they really wanna see is that we have a policy and we follow the policy. That's really the biggest thing. So it, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter whether it's thirty-five or thirty percent. Now, the other thing that I'll tell you in, indifferent right now than it was two years ago is the interest earnings we have off of that seventeen million dollars that's sitting in our fund balance, that's not nothing. That's significant amount of money that is credited back. It is one of our revenue sources. And so, um, by trying to draw down the fund balance, I don't recommend it. I recommend staying with the thirty-five percent that we have. It's a good policy. It helps us on our cash flow. And it's providing us with that, um, nest egg that we can then earn some interest earnings off of and, and contribute to the other part of the revenues.
So then just following up to what you're saying, and then I think this is to answer the new supervisor's, um, question, Supervisor Rice. What is our recourse and, and also Supervisor Amber's question and the fact that what is our recourse if we do go upside down? And I think you answered that with that fund balance. That is our recourse, right? If we go upside down, we're not collecting the property taxes, we're not collecting the sales taxes, um, then we turn to that, right? That, that's our recourse.
Yeah, um, you know, I've been with St. Croix County for eight years and we've been, uh, positive. We've been in the black every year in those eight years. My prior twenty years in government, not all twenty years finished in the black. Um, so that's, it's, uh, not that it's unusual, but it's not normally a common practice that you finish every year that way. Um, so I inherited a system, uh, that was set up and structured that way, and we've been able to maintain that as long as I've been here, uh, which puts the county in a very strong position. Uh, but that's what the fund balance is for, is to absorb a down year. You saw the health insurance fund, that's probably a good example. That's twenty-five percent of their projected expenses every year. And they have fallen below. And you actually saw in two thousand and eleven where they just bottomed right out. They almost ran out of money. I don't know what they're doing. That was before me. Um, but that was actually the year Pat was hired, but they were on a downward trend. And then, and then he reversed that. So his first year was, they bottomed right out at the bottom. Uh, and then it came back up after that with the policies that he was implementing. So, um, that is what the fund balance is for. That covers Supervisor Amber's question, what happens when we have a negative year? So it's not the end of the world, uh, but it does mean that I won't have any excess cash to put into the KIP or to reduce debt or anything else.
Supervisor Shirley.
So we've almost gotten there on the answer that I think Paul and I were asking about. In the, I know we don't have the, 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 this next year's audited version, but last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were inching on forty percent, am I correct, in the fund balance?
Oh, yeah, we were over forty percent. Yep.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's what typically happens, because every year, we've finished over forty percent. I don't think we've finished below forty percent in any year. We bring the balance back down. We start back down at thirty-eight percent. And then we come back up. We end up at forty-two, forty-four percent typically. And then we draw that fund balance back down by reallocating it either to KIP or to debt service.
Other questions or comments? Supervisor Hanson?
That's, uh, not an arbitrary decision. You always include the administration committee in where you put that. Is that right? Either debt service or KIP?
Yep, absolutely. That's a county board resolution that allocates those funds. So the full county board weighs in on how that money gets used every year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor Anderson.
I think what Administrator Cannon is doing is, is very wise. Um, I run my own budget that way. I always like to keep some in reserve because you never know. In our case where the sales tax, we might have another COVID issue where the sales tax income goes way down, we still don't go broke. He also mentioned that on that money, we're collecting insurance throughout the, or interest throughout the year. That also goes in. If we didn't have that, we'd have to reduce that, you know, subtract that off of our bottom line too. And we always have an opportunity to spend it at the end of the year when we know we're more than thirty-five percent. So I, I kinda like the way that we're doing it. I, I, I would like to, I'd like to see that continue. I like, I like the black. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Supervisor Adams.
Chair, thank you. Uh, Administrator Witt, uh, do we allow the employees to determine what insurance, health insurance company that we use, or is that a, a set company?
Yeah, it's a set company because we are self-funded. So we establish our own health insurance plan, and that's why we have a fund balance within the health insurance fund is because we're paying all of the claims out of there. So the way it works is, um, uh, every, so we have a, employees have a deductible amount. So they go to the doctor, they have a deductible, they have a copay, they pay that portion. After that is met, then, uh, the county pays those dollars. Um, so we use a third-party, uh, administrator that gets the bills and, and they pay it. So we don't actually see anyone's medical bills, but, uh, they pay the bills. And then when that hits a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for any one person, we have reinsurance. So we had a claim, uh, that was in excess of, uh, three million dollars. We only paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that three million dollar claim. So we protect ourselves from large claims, um, but we do self-insure really for that first hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's how our health insurance plan works. Now, uh, because we're self-funded, we design our own plan every year. And so, um, we pick. And so, we pick what medical group that we participate in. We're with Health Partners, that's the medical group that we're in. That's where your, where your in-network doctors are. We pick different types of coverages and stuff. There's a lot of federal and state controls over what covered and what isn't covered. But, we have the ability to pick those, set deductibles, set copays, and we can change those every year. And that's something that's vested with the administration committee to approve on an annual basis. So, any changes we have, we take to them.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just, oh, Supervisor Connor?
I guess I'm also in agreement with how the current system has been working. I've seen other municipalities where we've had situations where the, their debts in their municipality to their tax valuation ratio has went dramatically down. If you look back in the 2008 time period or thereafter, when the housing market hit, got hit, and all the valuations for everywhere went down dramatically, and it had a big impact towards a lot of communities that had a lot of debt out there. So, for us to be using debt, we aren't doing that that way. We're, we're doing it where we're buying it as we, as we have the cash available, and not setting ourselves, getting ourselves in these situations where we have these real high debt levels. So, for that, I commend how Administrator Witt has been doing it, and appreciate that very much. I've seen these other communities where all of a sudden their bond ratings went down dramatically because of that. So, it does have a big impact on us, and it's very good, I believe, to be more in a conservative way. I like how we also do it, because as we spend these funds, we are asked as a county board, what we feel the most important things and what projects are most needy, or what expenses need to be done at the time, as those funds are there. So, they're not just, well, we have money, so let's spend it. It's well-thought-out, and, and I can't think of a time in the past where we just decided, hey, let's just blow it on this. Every single time, we had very legitimate causes for where that, those funds were being spent. So, again, that what we're getting from staff and what's coming through from Administrator Witt has been very sound judgments that have come to us for making these expenses, and I appreciate it.
All right, if I could, start getting some polling, so I can help put together-
Can I add a real quick comment?
Yep, of course. Sure, why not?
I don't get to enter into these discussions during regular board meetings, so I just want to add, add a quick opinion. I, I also, I do like the policy that we've been follows, following. I, I think it's sound and it puts us in a good position. However, at the same time, I think that considering maybe some tweaking of that policy to reach some balance, it would be still worth considering. So, I think during this process, it's just something, tweaking it enough where we're comfortable that we're continuing the policy, but at the same time, we can generate some additional revenue to make sure that we're, we're doing the things that we need to do. It's-
Supervisor Hanson?
I'd look at, make sure that the, if you're bringing down the fund balance, that it doesn't offset the interest rate, or the interest income. So, that the feel-good factor of, of using that money someplace else, that there's not a, a cost that you're not seeing. So, look at the big picture, too, as we do that.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone's actually asking us for, to reduce our fund balance policy. Are you looking to reduce the total amount of fund balance that we have at all? Okay, I think what we're looking at is being more aggressive on the sales tax projection, which will have a net, which will have an impact, because there'll be less extra going into the fund balance each year. So, so the question I have for you, the first thing that I need to establish really is our revenue side. So, the question I'm going to ask you, and we'll just do a show of hands, I think our current policy of 90% of sales tax versus Supervisor Otino's request that we go to 95% of sales tax. So, it's a $500,000 shift. It would add $500,000 of revenue up there. So, that's my question. Who here is in favor of going to 95%? Do you want to handle that?
Well, I, I guess I, I'd like to modify that, because what my suggestion was, maybe it's not a question between 90 and 95. Maybe dollar-wise, we look at the expenses, ends up being 92 or 93. Reaching the right balance, I don't know that we want to just peg a particular percentage, because it might be, you know, could be 96, could be 92. I don't, you know. I'm just saying in that we, we need to be able to, I mean, maybe I'm answering your question by saying, let's be flexible and consider increasing that 90% based on our expenses, expected expenses.
Right, so that's the question, then. Supervisor Shirley, did you want to ask something?
Quick comment on that? We, we budget the 90%, but we're budgeting against the state's expectations, which we exceed every year. So, yeah, we may go from 90 to 92, but we're a million, million and a half over that conservative projection already. So, yes, we will spend more money, but we're not getting close to that 100%. If you want to think about it as 100%, it's not really.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we beat the state expectation by all that much. I think it's mostly just because we budget less than what the state is expecting, so. Yeah, I mean, there's probably been some years where we have, but I, you know, there isn't a significant amount of beating the state's projection. They're actually probably pretty close on their projections.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yeah, I want to make sure I have this right in my head. So, if we go from 90 to 95%, that means we're putting more money into the budget and spending it, rather than waiting till the end of the year and see what happens. And then, that money either goes into the KIP or the capital, into the KIP or debt reduction. Is, is that correct summation?
Yep, you got it, 100%.
I, I like the more conservative 90%. I don't want to, seems like if we have extra money, we'll spend it. I'd rather wait till the end of the year and then save the money by reducing debt or using it for KIP instead of taking on more debt.
No, he's in favor of the 90, yeah.
More money at the end.
Um, if I may, um, yes, more money at the end to decide what to do with it, spend it or reduce debt. But, if we put it into the budget now, it just seems like we'll just spend it. Oh, we got another $500,000, let's spend it on something.
Supervisor Shirley?
Just a quick follow-up. I, I think what we're, we're getting a little off track. I think what we're looking at is, moving forward, what incomes we want Ken to look at as an overall picture. We're not saying we're going to spend the 90 to 95, but do we want to make that available as an option?
You got another question down there.
Supervisor Hanson?
Yeah, I don't, I don't object to what Chair Long was going for, maybe a couple of percent, but make it reflective of what the economy's doing. It's almost a sure bet this year, with the inflationary period we're in, that we're going to, we're going to claim that. If the economy takes a more level approach, or perhaps dips a little bit, then there's no surety that we're going to be able to recoup that sales tax. We should be flexible to that, maybe write it into the policy, that it would be reflective of the current economy or the projected next year's economy. So, I, I could, I could possibly see a 3% capture, but not 5%. With, with the caveat that we would have some kind of a, a policy written in that we reflect the projected next year's economy.
Yeah, I, I, so I'll rephrase that question, and the discussion over here, if we put it in the budget, yeah, I'm spending it. I mean, that's why we put it in the budget. We don't, we don't put revenue into the budget and not spend it, and then end up with a bottom line, because we have a zero-based budget. So, any revenue that comes in, gets spent. So, the question then that I have for you, rephrased polling, do you want to go, do you want to stay at the 90%? Or are you in favor of going higher than 90, if we have expenses that you support, to increase it more than the 90% we've currently been having, I guess? Yeah.
I think the key there would be expenses that we support.
Yeah, well, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's always that. So, if you say, I come through and I'm adding a legal assistant for corporation counsel, and you guys go, no, we really don't like that one. So, I go, okay, I'll cut that out of the budget. Where do we do, reduce the revenue then to get back to zero? Well, we'll take it back out of sales tax, put it back off the books, and we'll end up with that extra at the end of the year. So, sales tax then becomes the, the one that, you know, either gets larger or smaller based upon your final expense determination.
Supervisor Berning?
Okay, so, our current policy, do we do a percentage of the state estimate? Is that how we currently do it?
No, I just estimate my own. And I know I'm low, because I'm really bad at estimating.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, it's not a percentage, but it's roughly 90-
You don't currently have a percentage?
No, it's not currently a percentage, but it's roughly 90%.
All right, and so how do you come to that dollar amount? How do you personally come to that dollar amount as our administrator?
I'm actually shadowing the state number by about $1 million.
Okay, so whether it's a 12 million projection or an 8 million projection, it's about a million, I mean, I realize it's not that big of a swing.
I've, I've grown it over the years, so, I mean, it started off smaller-
Okay, so roughly 90%.
But it's up to about a million right now. So, it's, we're roughly 90% of the state estimate.
Okay, so Supervisor Otino's number of a half a million is about what you're, okay, so he's talking about cutting that in half. We're talking about numbers now instead of percentages. So, what do we want to come to a decision on? Do we want to come to a decision on a possible number, like half, like cut Ken's estimate in half? Or do we want to come to a percentage of the state? Because I think we're, all of us are all over the place right now where we want to be. And I, Mr. Chair, if you could kind of grab that one by the horns, if you don't mind, and just say, this is what we're going to decide on, and are you guys all okay with that? Because I think that's what we need to do, and figure out, are we doing dollar amounts? Or are we doing a great percentage of the state estimate?
And maybe it would be more logical to talk about a dollar amount, with the-
Well, maybe the best way to phrase it is not who wants to change. Who likes the current policy and does not want to change the way we've been doing it? And then everyone else, I'll assume, has some flexibility at 2% to 4% to 5% to 10%. And we can work that out through the budget process. So, who doesn't want to change it, just leave it the way it is?
Six, seven, eight.
Eight, yep. And how many do we have here today? 14? Yeah, all right. Is Paul here? There he is. All right. Sorry, so that does not establish, eight out of the 15 doesn't establish a binding thing. I mean, that is half of you guys with four absent, so I mean, that could very easily flip-flop the other way. So, what I will do is, I don't know, I'll do something, though, with it. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to leave some flexibility on that. That's going to be a point of topic. Yeah, right. So, that, so what I do want to do is I want to move on from the revenue side, the sales tax, and get into some of the expenses. So, we could wrap up this discussion and then move to the next part.
I want to recognize Supervisor, Supervisor Teljon, I know he had a question.
And I think this becomes more realistic, once you put numbers to projects and, and expenses, and right now, it's, we're just all over the place, because we have nothing to look at. So, I'm willing to wait, because we can add and subtract them after we see where the numbers are.
Hanson?
I'll be brief. I, I changed my course on this one, but in the spirit of your method, I'd like to say, you know, I'm hoping that you just go a pinch more.
I get the sense that everybody would be comfortable with a little more flexibility. All right, you don't have, see nodding heads, so, Ken, can you, there you go.
Yeah, I think when I put the budget together, I'll put on, you know, these are the last two or three items added, and they're coming out of the increase that I built into sales tax. So, if you don't agree with the increase in sales tax, cut these items off. So, whether you agree with the expense side will affect what we do with the revenue side. So, all right, so moving on from revenues, then, was there anything that you heard from the department heads that you said, we have got to do that? That is absolutely a priority? Or, let's talk about really the big-picture ones, which are health insurance, compensation, positions, inflationary costs. So, those are the four really categorical-type items. So, health insurance, compensation, new positions, inflationary items.
Supervisor Shirley?
We know year after year that we're going to have the increase in health insurance. That's just a given. So, I think we have to roll with that. I think a starting space, and I'm not saying that I'm for or against wherever we're at, but I think a starting space for a step increase would be a 1%, just as a starting spot. We can talk about that later. And, we look at some of these one-time costs, like community development with the one-time $40,000, let's pull that out of debt, or out of fund balance or KIP or whatever. Those, those things that make sense, that are going to save us money later, let's, let's try to implement those things.
Supervisor Otino?
On that same line, I think we need to evaluate, is it something we want, or is it something we need to serve the community and the citizens of St. Croix County? We have so many times where we spend, it's absolutely extraordinary amounts of money on very small impact of the citizens of the county. Thank you.
It wants and needs, that's a really important topic. The other thing is, there are certain things that we have no control over, the inflationary pressures, that we might as well just build in right up front. Are you ready? Okay, Supervisor Berning? I couldn't tell.
Okay, so I've got notes here, for those people that aren't getting hugs. Just kidding. So, this question is for corp counsel. So, we moved CHIPS cases from the DA's office, correct? When we did that, my understanding was, we were making that move, because you guys could handle those cases and the DA's office could not. Now, what I'm understanding is, making that move is now going to cost us another $85,000 a year. I got to hear the justification for this, because that's not what we were sold on in making this move, from my memory.
I always presumed that we would need another legal assistant if we were taking under another caseload. We don't have the space for another person right now. And so, we have the attorney that can handle all of the CHIPS cases, and she does the TPRs also, but we don't have a legal assistant to handle all that. The paralegal's doing it now, it's going okay, but it just, all her other job duties, I'm doing now. So, I'm doing my attorney work and all the secretarial work, which is fine, but is really not cost-effective. And Carl can probably speak to the fact that there was a legal assistant in the DA's office that her sole job was CHIPS cases. So, I knew we would eventually need it, hoping to see maybe some cost savings with less foster care expenses, but I don't have any of those figures yet, only because we've been, only been doing this for six months.
Yeah, so, we had a dedicated legal assistant who did the CHIPS cases. That was our only caseload. And we actually had another legal assistant who would back her up, like if she was gone or something like that, but, and I don't know if, who all remembers, but over, I think the last three years, my ask for positions was a legal assistant end version. But, since we got rid of CHIPS, that opened up a legal assistant, so I'm not asking for a legal assistant position anymore. So, especially the, the one we needed, because of our caseload, is now needed by a corp counsel.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to point out. The DA's office had a contract attorney cost that we eliminated, which is only about 30 or 35,000. And they had the request for the legal assistant, which they've dropped their request. Now, the request is landing over here.
And we just have been taking on more cases, our guardianship cases, because of adult protection and all that- adult protection and all the aging population. Our guardianship cases probably have doubled in the last five years. And so, I can't request the other legal assistant to take that on because her caseload has increased too. So, it's just an increase in cases. Our population's going to continue to grow. The adult protection cases and guardianship cases are increasing even though we're trying to reduce CHIPS cases. So, it's just a need, and with a growing county, we're going to have more cases we'll have to file.
Yeah, that makes sense then after District Attorney Carlson came up, or came up and said that, or Anderson, Carl Anderson, sorry. Oh, man, I should start drinking coffee again. Okay, let's see here. HR training and development for staff. Is Aubrey still here? Hi, Aubrey.
Come on up.
Come on up. I got a question for you. All right, so what specifically are you looking for this person to do at the, at the cost of $120,000 a year for training? So, can you really give me some details on that? Because that, that was, that was a tough one.
Right, so I think the first several years, well, there's so many priorities. So, looking at, every department has, what I've found, either a handbook or policies specific to their departments. And the issue is that maybe HR hasn't really been involved in that process or taken a look at it. So, there's a bunch of overlap between HR county policies and then department policies, and they don't really mesh very well, right? One might say one thing, one says another, which one then are people supposed to follow? So, we need to look at all policies. So, just for an example, we started with public health. There's over like 130 policies to go through, plus a handbook, and then plus training programs. So, for, for us to do it in our office right now with the staff we have, it's so painfully slow. We've worked with public health and highway at this point, but, so they would work with safety skills to do a new safety ma- matrix for every department. They would, I would like them to focus on building a supervisor training program. We currently are doing quarterly leadership sessions, which is a two-hour training every three months. That's just not sufficient. Looking at FMLA laws, ADA laws, employment laws, and that's just the legal part of it, making sure that our supervisors know the legalities of how to interact with employees, but also the other part for employment relations, communication, really building up your team and supporting them, providing those type of supplemental trainings as well. So, I would like somebody who really has the knowledge to be able to run those type of courses, so has coaching and counseling background with leadership programs. And then also, they'd work with every department. We need to get all the policies in place, look at all the LMS systems that we currently have around the organization, decide, do we need to keep those or can we get rid of them? Because we have a ERP system, right? Oracle has training capabilities within it. Can we get rid of some of that LMS and put it into the Oracle system for better record retention? So, we know where all those files are, we know what's being trained on. So, a lot of it sounds a little bit projecty, like will this be a long-term position? There's just so much work to be done in the first two to three years, but after that, yes, it's still going to be something that I see as a 40-hour a week job.
So, do you, do you think this is something that we could short-term contract out to clean up with a third-party organization to come in, clean it up, get things in, get things in place, put it into the Oracle system, and then reevaluate it down the road for a full-time position?
I do, I think, just working with contract services in the past, they seem to be three times as expensive as just bringing someone in and hiring them and having them be committed and part of our team and really getting a focus and understanding of the county and what we're looking for. So, preference would be to have somebody in-house, but yes, and we could.
So, that is, that is a possibility.
Yes.
Yeah, and I understand that contracting someone out is going to be much more expensive in the short term, but I'm looking more long-term. And as we have a shrinking, you know, cushion tax levy, we just went to the taxpayers for $896,000 ongoing every year.
Right.
I'm looking at this going, when's the next one going to pop up that we have to do that? So, at $120,000 a year, I would say we could take cap, capex money, undesignated funds, borrow, whatever we got to do, use that to plug the hole and fill the gap and fix what you guys have. Anyway, this is something for all of us to discuss, but you brought forward a lot of my questions, so thank you very much.
Just a follow-up on that real quick.
Yes.
How many FTEs do you have currently, Audrey?
Right, 650, 700?
No, no, FTEs.
Oh, my department.
Yeah.
Five.
Five. In 2016, when I started here, we had five in HR. We have 100 more employees now than we had at that point in time. So, if they haven't grown into the need for an additional FTE yet, they will by the time that project ended.
Yeah, totally.
And that's where I thought the position could change slightly over time too.
Yeah.
So, somebody who's kind of focused on that. I don't think that the need for training programs and development and growth and those opportunities will ever go away. But even if it did become like a .75 FTE need, I'm thinking with additional staff, different needs, that we could kind of redevelop that position and utilize it as a half HR advisor role if needed. That, I feel like there will kind of always be the need for that as we continue to grow.
So, okay, great. I appreciate that. There's, there's more I'm going to add to that down the road, but I, you answered all my questions, so thank you very much. And thank you for everything you've been doing the last few years.
Thanks.
Let's see here, tax collecting software. We're splitting this between two different departments, is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it all comes out of the same checkbook though, so.
Yeah, yeah, right. No, hey, yes, very, yes, still signed Ken Wood at the bottom, right? Or no, no, actually.
Actually, the clerk in the treasury.
Yes, that's right, I'm sorry. So, how is that going to help us? Is there anything we can do different? Is that like a mandatory, like we just have to, like we're stuck with this tax software? Yes. Oh, okay, well, that was quick. All right, so, big gulp, son, see you later. Robbie got a gold medal, let's see here. You know, Bob, I can take this offline with Bob. So, those are the questions I had for the notes from the department heads. So, thank you for giving me the time, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Shirley.
I know it's a more, a smaller item to deal with right now, but a follow-up on HR. If we have a training person hired, are we taking that responsibility off of the department heads of what they're doing now? Or is this in combination with that?
In combination with, right? Because there's always going to be just that, you know, what do you do to train specifically for that position? And HR doesn't really have that knowledge, right? I don't know how to be a social worker, so it's hard for us to develop a program-specific job-related training. So, this would be just a larger focus on, on developing skills, knowing where that skill set is, the knowledge that maybe we need, that, finding those gaps of skills and knowledge sets. And that helps us recruit for the right types of individuals to, that we need to bring in, but also legal training, how to deal with coworkers, communication. That's always just kind of been a big trigger word over the last years with all the employee relations issues that we usually deal with. It's communication-focused, learning how to deal with different types of personalities within the workforce and things like that, so.
So, I'm just going to follow up with Supervisor Shirley's. So, you're talking about kind of creating a training culture across the entire county, then?
Yeah, to bring a little bit more, more cohesiveness between the departments so that we're all on the same page, we're all kind of learning the same things. But also, the, the main focus, what we have, about a fourth of our employees, a little less, are supervisors. And a, and a lot of them are new supervisors, where maybe they've, they've never had a supervising role before. So, to, for them, I think it's just unfair at this point to, to expect them to walk into a position and just know what they're supposed to be doing from a supervisory standpoint. So, I think that's our, our biggest downfall is the supervisor training.
Do you anticipate that this would cut back on travel for outside training?
Um, no, just to be honest, just because a lot of that training is very specific job-related training, right, that we wouldn't be focusing on as much. But we could definitely help find those types of trainings, more job-skill-focused trainings within our area, and whether that's online or just having an in-house trainer, that this person would be dedicated to kind of being an expert in some of those areas to provide that training to individuals. So, it kind of tie into our new onboarding program that we have right now too. That would be something that I'd wanted this position to take over, to really kind of continue to step up that program a little bit more as well. Just for retention, I think every department currently maybe has their own different culture, so to kind of bring us together as a county is important, making everybody feel like they are part of a team, recognizing that we all work together for kind of one goal. And I think HR as a whole can really have a big say in what that culture looks like. But we're just a little short-staffed on being able to really reach all the goals that we're trying to get to, so.
Yeah, I think the, when we talked about the slides of the challenge we're going to have finding employees over the next five years, developing our employees may be the best bet.
Right.
You know, hiring somebody that maybe doesn't have that leadership or that supervisor experience yet, but then teaching them how to do it and teaching them how to do it well.
Supervisor Leaf.
Yeah, I agree, retention is huge because we are already in a competitive marketplace with Minnesota anyway. So, I think the more we can do to improve staff morale and retention would be huge. I also think, I'm an upstream tactic person, meaning prevention versus always having to be reactive. So, I would be supportive of the HHS position for youth justice as well. And then I think you said you had a plan for the ME office?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to change. We've been talking about what that model is going to look like. So, with Patty's retirement, I mean, it just, it will change. Yeah, I mean, we're not finding another Patty. So, what I heard, I think it was Supervisor Shirley's opening remarks, was health insurance was probably the top priority because that's just something you're going to have to do. Really don't have much choice. So, health insurance is going to be out there. Now, on the five to 10% range, I mean, do you want me to modify the plan to keep it on the lower end, add fund balance to keep it on the lower end, something to keep it though on the lower end of that? I mean, is that, you know, part of your goal? I see some of the heads nodding, okay. The second thing on there was employee compensation. Supervisor Shirley had suggested 1%. So, a step increase is pre-built into the grid. So, we have a wage grid. If you budget for a step increase, it is 2%. I, I can't do a half a step, it is a full step. Now, what I can do is give no step increase, but then give a COLA of 1%. So, I can still get to what you want dollar-wise, but it's a different methodology. So, when this system went into place in 2016, we have done a step every year since then. And so, it will impact, if you don't do a step, it will have an impact on employee morale. A 2% step is better than a 2% COLA because it impacts what, how the employees are viewing themselves as they progress through the wage grid. And what you want to see is them continuing to grow through that grid. So, I just, I just want to stress why a step increase is important for employee morale, even above what the cost is dollar-wise. There's a benefit there. So, that's something that you'll have to consider. So, to get to 1%, it would be no step and a COLA instead.
So, how much left do we have?
10 minutes? I don't know.
Can we hang, let's, let's hang on for a little bit. Supervisor Leaf.
I had a question. I mean, I support the employee increase, obviously. I mean, it gets back to my point about retention, and that's the easiest way. If we're constantly turning over employees, then we still have, we're constantly training, and it's, it affects service delivery. But then, now I lost my question because I went off my, um, no, I'll think of it.
I'll ask a question for you. Do we know what our current turnover rate is?
I know what it is.
So, how are we doing now? And so, we have a better idea of how a step or not a step would, might impact that.
We are doing slightly better than other counties, right? About 14, 15% turnover annually, which is, it's not outside of industry norms, so.
Yeah, and we've been at that really for the last decade. Because of our proximity to the Twin Cities, that is our constant turnover rate. That, that has been very steady.
I thought of it. So, we have, are we going to run into any compression issues? Or have we sort of dealt with the salary compression issues?
Yeah, the new wage grid did create a little bit of compression issues that we adopted this year. Not giving a step increase, we'll compound that then. Because, so you have somebody that, you know, is at step one, they got hired this year in 2024, you give no step increase, so they're at step one still in 2025. You bring someone else in, they're at step one. So, I, I've been here a year longer, but we're going to make the exact same amount of money. So, that's where, that's what I was talking though, that's where the employees see that step increase as recognition for the service that they've had to the county and why the step increases are employee, important from an employee mental morale purpose.
Is there? Have I, I had one at the school, or is that? So, it was 13-step program. When you got to the 13th step, the only increase you got done was whatever cost of living, so on.
Yeah, ours is a 19-step. So, there's a lot of steps. And so, if you maxed out, you're at the step 19, you are only getting COLA adjustments. And so, if we have just a step, no COLA, you're not getting any increase. But there's probably less than a dozen employees that are at the maximum step.
Supervisor Carlson.
Yeah, my numbers might not be totally correct, but you said 550K position request and 400K software, et cetera, so just shy of a million. And then, the, what you forecast up here is, depending on what health insurance is, say it is 10%, it is a million, we're talking 1680. Perhaps we should, when we were talking about the 10% and 5%, stay with the 10%-ish minus what we need to cover all this if we want to fund everything. And that might be a good compromise between doing the 10% and, you know, it'd be a couple of percent. If we want to fund everything, all the requests, that's one way to do it.
Yep, I agree with you. That's probably part of the methodology that's going to go into the 2025 budget.
Supervisor Shirley.
Just to run through quick numbers off the top of my head here that I wrote down. The reason that I had set a starting spot at 1% was just pure number-wise. Because if you look at 500,000 for insurance, a 1% is 300,000. You're talking about an increase of 1.15 coming in. And then if we adjust sales tax, we say we get 200,000 from that. If we support all of that at a health insurance, 1%, we support the HR position, and then our 400,000, that's all we have. So, yeah, I, it'd be nice to, to do more for the employees, let's try to find it. But I said, as a starting spot, I think that's where we have to start. Because we really don't have another choice to start anywhere else.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that challenge.
Supervisor Hanson, sorry.
I, I respect that very much, but I think I agree with the idea that it would be good for morale, and I think morale, morale's very, very important right now. Looking at the numbers of available employees in the marketplace, we should be looking at a step. So, in the balance, as we, as we give priorities to the administrator, I, I think we should consider that step is, is probably a critical part of this entire mix. So, that's my two cents.
All right, so after compensation then, so health insurance is the number one priority. Compensation is two. Whether it's 1% or a full step increase, I think is to be determined. I think third on the list is really these inflationary pressures slash tools that the departments have asked for to do their job. So, we want to provide the tools so they can do the work that they're doing. And then fourth is the positions. So, out of the positions then, do So out of the positions, then, do you have a priority of where those are? So we had positions, well, ME, we're going to address that. Justice support, though, they had a .4 FTE for drug tester. District Attorney had 100,000 for diversion case manager. Corporation counsel is 85 for a legal assistant. Human Resources has, I'm going to cut her down, probably closer to 100,000 than 120 for the training position. And then in Health and Human Services, we really had, you know, a half, it's 1.12 FTEs that they were looking for, for the ADRC, and then the youth justice berth to three. So those are all the positions. So where are the priorities for these positions? What's jumping out to you as the number-one priority, so I can sort of build that in?
I would like to suggest, in the spirit of not micromanaging, that maybe our county administrator is probably in the best position to determine those priorities based on his relationship with his department heads.
Draw their names out of hat, it is. [laughter]
Mr. Administrator, if you would explore very thoroughly with Aubrey how to do this so we don't have to commit to an employee and then down the road, sorry, that's not going to work out or whatever. So I think we should really heavily explore that option in that capacity and other options as well.
All right. So really, we've covered everything that I need to put together a draft of a budget priority resolution. So I've taken all of your input, and I'll put something together, but if you have any final questions.
Yeah, any other final comments or suggestions before we move ahead? Thank you all for all your feedback. What was that?
I just got one more minute worth of stuff here. They asked me before the meeting what time we thought we'd get done. I said 10:34. So [laughter]. And then, and then I added four minutes, didn't I? So if I could just stretch this out. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time today. I really do appreciate it.
Any requests for future gen items? Any announcements correspondence? Okay. We have no idea when the next meeting's going to be. We'll let you know. We're adjourned at 10:33.